Work session of the Waco City Council. Welcome all the people gathered here in the Basque Theater Gallery here today in beautiful downtown Waco. Welcome to all the viewers at home watching on the Waco City Cable Channel, wherever you are out there. Thank you, everybody, for joining us here in this proceeding this afternoon. I'm Mayor Jim Holmes. I'm joined on the dais here today by our council members, Josh Bordered from District Three, Darius Ewing from District Four, George Chase from District Five, and Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield next to me here. Isabelle Lazzano is going to be a little late for our meetings today, but she'll be joining us later. Also joined on the adjacent dais by senior city staff Bradley Ford, city manager, city attorney Kristen Hamilton-Carum, and city secretary Michelle Hicks there on the end. We're going to start the meeting today with a moment of silence. First item on the business today is the recognition of work session speakers. Is there anyone present, city secretary Hicks, who would like to speak on a work session agenda item?
No, Mayor, no, we have not received any cards.
Have not received any cards, and so there's nobody out there who wants to talk about a work session agenda item. Seeing no request to speak, we'll now recess the regular session and convene into work session with the report from city manager Ford.
Thanks, Mayor and Council, and good afternoon to those watching online. I'll have a brief report today out of respect for what all's going on on the agenda. Wanted to start by giving our esteemed city attorney a moment to recognize new employee.
Thank you, city manager Ford. We have a new lawyer working with our team, Devin Singh, and Devin comes to us having done appellate work at a firm in Dallas, and we're very excited for you to join our team. Devin will be working with many different departments, starting out with the Housing Department.
Where is Devin again? Stand up!
Will you stand for us, Devin?
There we go. Welcome. Welcome to the Waco team. Appreciate you being part of this group. We work hard, we play hard, we get things done. So appreciate you being part of this group.
I think we have a new tagline.
What's that?
Work hard, play hard?
Absolutely.
And get things done.
I'll keep it legal.
All three. That's right. That's why we have you here.
Monica goes out of town, and we have a new tagline. The other item I wanted to mention, Mayor and Council, is we do have a change to the consent agenda. We have resolutions E5 and E6 that relate to the Invasus project that'll be pulled off your agenda and come back at a later date. So we'll just ask you to not act on those, and we'll bring them back at a later date. We'll still have the work session review by our Jeremy Pacina and Chris Collins here in a few minutes, but the resolutions won't be acted on.
It's E5 and E6, correct?
E5 and E6, yes, sir. And then I wanted to give a minute, if you're a regular watcher of our agendas, you'll note, probably out in the public, I think even maybe Mr. Jacob Bell noted in his review of the agenda, that we have a new software and a new approach of how things look when we post our agendas now, a little different. And so I wanted to give my chief of staff Ashley Nice from a couple of minutes to walk through how things look and feel a little bit different if you're a regular watcher of the agendas. So we won't take long in this, but Ashley, if you'll spend a few minutes talking about that change.
Sure. So we have been excited to bring y'all a new agenda software. It's a big change for us on internal practices, and then also we want to recognize that it's going to be a change from the public facing standpoint and a user standpoint of how people interact with our agendas, and hopefully it'll be a smoother experience for people. So we have switched over from our MinuteTrack software, which was an end-of-life software, is a Granicus product, and we have used that product since 2014. So it has reached the peak of its functionality there, aging it out, and it's no longer receiving customer supporter updates like an active software would. So we have spent some time looking at other agenda management platforms. We landed on a product called One Meeting, which is fully web-based and browser-based, a little more user-friendly on the user side as far as inputting items and able to access it from a phone or tablet or computer versus being tied down to that desktop application. We do have a new portal online, as well as we're utilizing Swagit, which is a partner company through Granicus for our online streaming services. So there are several updated features and functionality that we wanted to make sure that y'all were aware of, make sure the public's aware of as we're moving forward. Today is our first day running this software on a live meeting platform. We have been using Swagit for our broadcast for a couple of meetings now, but this is our first meeting with both of those up and running. So some people have noticed, if you had our previous agenda meeting platform bookmarked on your computer, that link does not any longer contain the new agendas. So we are using the One Meeting platform. So if you're going through our IQM2 link, that no longer works. It'll take you to our archived meetings. Those will still live online under that software until everything's fully transitioned over from a record standpoint. But for all meetings going forward, the public will want to access to our meeting agendas. So this is just a screen grab of our homepage, and on the top bar, we have that link for meeting agendas there outlined in red. And once you click into that, that'll take you to this page where you can view upcoming agendas. You can filter it by specific boards or commissions. This is also a link to our old meetings on the IQM2 platform, so you can get there as well to go back and view old meetings in minutes. But going forward, all of our new meetings into the future will live on this platform, and you can access different versions of the agenda as well as view the live meeting stream from this page as well.
Ashley, real quick, too, let's say, is this also a good platform for our residents to access if they want to go back and watch a broadcast that's from the past as well?
Yes, so I would recommend going to the My Waco TV page for past meetings prior to utilizing Swagit. Some of them will be on, all the videos will be on that IQM2 platform, so this meeting archives button, you can get to them there. They are also loaded up on our My Waco TV page as far as YouTube and Vimeo videos of those meetings. And I'll show you a little bit of the functionality of Swagit going forward here in just a minute.
But starting with today's meeting onward, those meetings, this could be a place where you could access them?
Yes, and so My Waco TV. My Waco TV will always have the YouTube links. We'll have those videos there, and then the Swagit will be accessed through this portal. So this is where you would go. So say you want to view the agenda for today's meeting, you have a few different options. We have the HTML agenda, which is a browser-based version of the agenda, and we also have PDFs of the agenda and the agenda packet. So I don't have it in the screen grab here, but if you click on these three dots, that'll open up additional options, and that's where you'll find that agenda packet if you want to download it just as a full PDF of all 700 pages of it. So but in this kind of run-through, I'll click you through into the HTML agenda, and it will take you to a new tab with the full agenda on there, and you'll notice there's little clipies, if you remember the clippy from Word, of all of the attachments for our items. And so you can go through the agenda and view each item, and if you want to view the attachments, so in our previous version, we would have a link to PDF online, and you would click on that, and it would scroll you down in the PDF to where that item is. Well, now what we have on the HTML agenda is, say I want to view item number two, and I click on that item, and it's going to drop down all the attachments for me right there. And you can click on the eyeball if you want to view, it'll open up in a new tab for you, or you can click on the cloud or the title, and it'll download the attachment for you as a separate file. If you're just browsing through, I would recommend using the eyeball. It'll open up for you that new attachment. And so then you click on that, and it'll open that attachment for you in a new tab. You can go back to your HTML tab and keep browsing through the agenda. Kind of eliminates having to bounce back and forth on the scroll bar, getting between So again, that's there on the documents page for the meeting portal. And if you click in on the play button, so this is a screen grab of today's meeting before we had started it, it'll take you to the Swagit portal. And so as they're going through the meeting, they will have our live stream playing here in this box, and they have the agenda available. And as we're going through the meeting, they are indexing the meeting to each agenda item. So when you go back to view the video, you can click on an agenda item, and it'll take you right to where that item was discussed in the video. We also have closed captioning. Live closed captioning is a part of this feature, so anybody watching online through the Swagit player will have live closed captioning as well. And then when we are in the meeting for our work sessions, we will leave the full screen up for the sake of PowerPoints. But during the business session, one of the really cool features of this software is that we have live meeting management, and we'll have some different displays for you. So during the business portion of the meeting, we will have a display featured up on the screen if you want to look behind you. It's not going to show on your desktop versions there, but for anybody in the audience, and we can link these to other displays, you know, either outside the council chambers where we might have members of the public viewing. And it'll show what item we're on, and then as y'all take action, when the city secretary is keeping the minutes during the live meeting manager, it'll show who made the motion, who seconded, and then when she calls for a vote, y'all, the public will see who, how votes were taken, and if the motion passed or failed. And so that's how we'll move through the agenda and have some kind of a way for people to follow along with where we're at in the agenda during the meeting. And then we can always switch back to our full screen when we're looking at PowerPoints and displays.
This feels like a big win for both accessibility and transparency and just the ability to follow along with our meetings.
Yes, so, yeah. So it is change. There are going to be some adaptations that we all have to make. It's not exactly the same as we've been coaching our staff. We're not recreating the system we had before. We're not recreating MinuteTrack. And so we're moving forward with this one. You know, if there are user functionalities that could be improved, we'd certainly love to hear about them and would love for members of the public to get to explore and follow along with what we're doing.
Ashley, is there a, or will there be a tutorial of some sort that our residents can click on the YouTube page because this is new?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And I think that for our residents and our resident, when we forget how to do it, we can go back.
For sure. We have been creating tutorials for staff, and we had not yet done one for the public, but I think it's a great idea, and we could get with our comms team to kind of create a short walkthrough video for people. Thank you.
And Mayor and Council, I do want to say a quick thank you to Ashley and Amy Will Banks from my office, as well as Michelle Hicks, city secretary, and the rest of the team that spent quite a bit of time and effort on this. It doesn't seem like something that should take as much as it does, but it really is the wheels of our bureaucracy running, and so I'm excited and want to say thanks to the team that made it happen.
Great, yeah, looks good. I know when I started looking at this Saturday over the holiday weekend, and it didn't look the same. I think I sent a panicky email out to Bradley and said, "What's going on?" But yeah, but you were kind enough to kind of slow me down a little bit, and I figured it out. But yeah, this looks great. I think it's going to be great. At least that's what you're telling me on this slide here. So looking forward to it.
I thought this was her intro slide to the legislative update.
It's the time, but there's a little bit in between.
Okay, well, we'll get to that here in a minute.
Be a little less optimistic.
Thanks, Ashley. All right.
Bradley, I do want to mention, I did catch a little wind that a lot of folks on staff, and you mentioned some of them, had to put a lot of work into getting specifically this agenda, as well as sort of prepping the format for future agendas in place, and that we've been giving a lot of feedback to the developer and the provider on this. So really appreciate the work that went into this. It's hard to put together a multi-hundred-page agenda with any software, with a new software as we're working, and have strict legal proceedings we have to abide by in terms of posting and getting things out there. It takes a lot of effort for something that seems menial, like a bunch of paper. So I really, really appreciate that because I know it was not as easy as clicking a couple buttons. Thank you.
All right. Mayor and Council, I am not going to highlight any particular resolutions tonight, but I will take any questions you have of me at this time.
City manager Ford, I didn't really have any highlights in there either. I did want to just point out the 17, wait a minute, resolutions 18 and 19, which now are going to be 16 and 17, I guess, but 18 and 19, as they have to do with the water remote control system and water tank cleaning. We saved, by the fact that I think Charles Lees, who you're out here today, and your group determined that we didn't, we had the extent of testing that we needed, and by doing so and making an affirmative decision on that we were in good shape, you saved the city about a half million dollars. I'd love to see that kind of responsibility and cost savings, if I'm reading that right. Am I reading that right, Charles? Okay, $450,000 just by determining we were already in good shape on tank cleaning. So that, whenever I see that, I got to do an attaboy, so I appreciate that. That's the only one that I had, the couple that jumped out at me. Is that everything, Bradley?
That's it for me.
Okay. And that's all the observations on the public hearings and the individual consideration. Yeah, we've got these things separated differently now. Okay, good. The next item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes resolutions E1 through E19, except for E15, where council member Boardroom has filed an affidavit of substantial interest, and we are also pulling E5 and E6 according to city manager Ford's instruction. Are there any other items, Council, would like to remove from the consent agenda? There being none, we'll move on to the next item then. Next item is work session, items B4 through B7. City manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
Mayor, I'm going to invite our new airport manager on up to the table. He's going to give us an overview of paid parking at Waco Regional Airport. This is a, I would call it a continuation of a conversation we started a few months back, as staff has looked for ways to reduce the subsidy from the general fund to the airport fund and to create some sustainability in that fund. So looking forward for Mr. Harris to provide you an update of the implementation of this fee. James?
Thank you, city manager Ford, Mayor, and members of council. Today I wanted to discuss implementing parking fees at the Waco Regional Airport. I think it's a great step into moving us into a position of self-reliance. Overall, I want to give you a brief history of our parking situation, some of the industry standards surrounding airport parking, go over our fee structure and the costs related to it, some revenue predictions, and our comms plan moving forward. And please excuse me, I'm a little nervous. It's my first time here, so be gentle.
So far, so good. So far, so good.
Stay strong. Totally with you.
We've all got our seat belts on, turbulence or something.
Tray tables are on.
Yeah, you got this. You got this.
Okay, so just give you a brief background. From all my research that I've done, Waco Regional Airport is never charged for parking. Talking with people when I originally got here, that was always brought up, why should we have to pay for parking? We only got one flight to Dallas. But it's a part of growth, so everything in time grows. The airport's growing. So Waco Regional Airport is one of three airports in Texas right now that does not charge for parking. One is San Angelo. I wasn't supposed to do that. One is San Angelo, and the other is Beaumont. Every other commercial service airport charges for parking. So back in March, the interim airport manager gave a presentation identifying parking fees as one of the, one of the ways the airports can become self-reliant financially. Like I said, around the country, over 90% of commercial service airports, they also charge for parking. So a little bit of the industry standard. For many years, the airport's been reliant on a subsidy from the city for its day-to-day operation. As an enterprise fund, we should be able to operate without any subsidy of any kind, except for our FAA grants and our entitlements from the FAA. But as an enterprise fund, we shouldn't have to come and ask the city for help to operate day-to-day. It should just be in our revenues. The FAA has outlined guidance that states that every airport should make a concerted effort to become self-reliant financially and independent of its owner or thereof. Implementing the parking fees moves us closer to become self-reliant and less reliant on a subsidy from the city. So our goals, let me scroll down my notes here. So our goals for implementing the parking fee, we want to continue to, sorry, we want to continue to offer a, I want to figure this out. So we want to continue to offer a security parking area that has cameras, lights. We're going to do some upgrades and everything else. So our goals are to implement a competitive parking fee that will lower or eliminate subsidy and provide a smooth transition from free parking to paid parking with as little disruption as possible. If you look at the slide, you'll see in blue our current parking areas. The part in orange is what we're going to use for, we call it pick-up and drop-off. It'll be two hours or less parking for free, and then we have the rental car lot, and then where we're going to move the employee lot to. So about the parking fee. So our target date to start the parking fee is October 1. We have a flat rate of $5 per day capped at $25 per week, giving passengers two days a week of free parking. The implementation follows a planned three-year phased increase to $9 per day, starting in October 27, 2027, subject to city council approval. In the process, we're going to be using Park Mobile. They're quick, they're easy, they're user-friendly, and they're known around the country. Different cities have them. They have parking meters, they apply them to parking lots. It's super simple to use. They have an app. You can log on to their website, or you can even give them a phone call and pay your fees. So how it works is you pull into the parking lot and you park. There'll be signs all around the parking lot. Some will have barcodes, some will just have simple instructions. They'll all have a parking zone number, which at the airport, it's only going to be one zone for all the lots. So you just select you're at the Waco Regional Airport. You select the duration of time you're planning on staying. You confirm the details, and then you start parking. In the event that your stay lasts a little longer, you can go back into the app or the website, or call them on the phone and say, "I want to extend my trip a day, two days, a week, a month," whatever you need to extend it to. And again, it's quick and easy to do right there on the website. So the cost, so there's no implementation cost to the city. All signs are provided by Park Mobile. The airport will provide some updated signs with wayfinding signs for parking lots and everything. So we've broken down a one-day trip, a seven-days trip, and a 14-days trip, what the total cost will look like. So for example, a one-day trip, they charge 20 cents plus 3% of one day, and then the merchant fee is 40 cents per transaction. So the monthly revenue expectation, so as we sit right now, our parking lot is around 40% full. So we broke it down to a percentage to show you what it would look like between 40 and 100%. If we stay 40% year-round, we're looking at about $402,000 in revenue, going all the way up to 100%, which we could see over $800,000 a year. So the fee comparison, if you compare our fees to other airports in the region, you'll see the cost savings. So again, the one-day trip, you're saving $15 versus driving to Austin or, you know, $13 driving to Dallas. And if you look at two weeks, look how much money you save just flying in Waco. One of the other things I get from people is that it just costs too much to fly to Waco. And I ask them, "Have you factored in travel time? Have you factored in parking? Because you're not going to beat our price no matter where you go." So I like this graph. Actually, I love this graph because it shows you exactly how much you're going to save just by flying in Waco.
Manager Harris, I think on single day at DFW, I was just there last week, I had to park up there, and it was 34. You travel quite a bit.
Yes, Mayor, so we took the averages.
Long-term, maybe?
So long-term averages between the parking lots to get a single number. I didn't want to try to give a range because you can spend up to $50 in Dallas.
Yeah, $34 a day, real easy.
Depending on which lot you go to.
Exactly.
If you want to park up front, prepare to pay for it.
Yeah. So I think the delta is even greater than what we're showing, but you're conservative in this, which is good.
So our communication plan, so we've been working with the city's marketing team to develop a marketing strategy. We're going to hit social media, we're going to hit the media, newspapers, everywhere we can to get the word out that once city council approves, there will be a parking fee implemented at the airport. And they'll be, we'll send out information on how you can pay. We'll have staff available inside and outside the terminal to help people figure out how to use Park Mobile. And again, there'll be signs everywhere, there's phone numbers, they can call our office, we're all ready to answer any questions. So the timeline for implementation, so tonight, you all vote if we're going to have these fees implemented at the airport. If approved, we'll roll out our marketing strategy tomorrow, starting with social media I have a couple interview requests that I've been getting all day, so I'll answer those, and we'll hit it hard. We'll also start installing signage and get Park Mobile set up for the airport. So October 1, the parking fee begins, and then November 1, we're going to go back and evaluate our catchment, as I'm going to call it, to find out what we're making, and if we're having any, if we're having any issues with people paying, then we'll figure out how we can continue to help people. Maybe we'll have to put more staff out in the parking lots. We're not sure yet. We got to evaluate to see what we're going to need.
You may have touched on this already, but the, will this do away with the specified short-term 24-hour parking lot specifically? So you could park anywhere and it costs the same, or would that still be reserved for short-term?
Essentially, yes.
Yes, it will do away with it?
I'm going to say yes. So traditionally, the airport doesn't have a short-term lot. I don't like the term, but a short-term lot is basically like a two-hour, three-hour max. That's what your big airports consider a short-term lot. So having that 24 hours, we have, right now, we have no way to say, "That person's been there over 24 hours." So we can call it a short-term, but we're not enforcing it because we don't have the manpower to do so.
Okay, I was just checking on the semantics of that. And then to confirm as well, from a cost-saving standpoint, we're not having to hire any additional staff or outsource any of the enforcement of the, how we monitor that, right? We're using existing staff to kind of go out in the parking lot and make sure that that's happening.
Yes, sir. We're going to use existing staff. Right now, we have 24-hour coverage. We have security on staff. So we're already rolling out training and implementing, implementation strategies to be able to go out, check the parking lot throughout the day, make sure that the ones that are there are in the Park Mobile system and have paid, and if they haven't, we're working on a different solution for that.
That's great. Thank you.
Director Harris, before we go too far past comms, I, we were talking how we roll out the plan and get the information, and I was looking, I saw, I thought I saw Chris Collins in the audience, and I was like, "Oh, there she is." And I was thinking, maybe one of the things we should add is ask the chamber if maybe they'll consider doing a networking event at the airport so that the business community can know about the changes as well. Because this is one of those things where, yeah... Because this is one of those things where, yeah, we can hit social, yeah, we can do the things, but that, and if the city has any billboards, is that a thing? I mean, because I, you know, what we're going to face is, oh, I didn't know that, why didn't anybody tell me this? Well, we're going to do our best to get the information out as much and as many ways as possible, but I thought, you know, maybe that would be a way to get that information out as well, because our business and corporate partners are utilizing Waco Regional, probably, you know, or if, especially during football season, if we ask Bala, you know, to make it a part, in the relationships that we have, if that's something that could be considered.
Yes, Council. So billboards are in the plan.
Okay.
It's in another plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Billboards are in the works, and I will reach out to the chamber.
Okay. The other thing is, with the $25 a week cap, as the years advance and those rates increase, what is the, how will the cap increase?
We haven't discussed that further. That's something that we'll have to bring to council and see if you want to keep that two days, maybe move it to one, or eliminate it all completely.
Because I'm assuming that once we do probably a year, we can look at it to see, you know, for the averages, to see what it is, if it needs to increase as we step up in years. But yeah, I was just, because I don't want, you know, when we get to 2030, you know, if it's still at $25, I don't know that that's helping us beat our bottom line anymore. Okay, and then the other thing is not a you question, but it's just a universal question. One would assume that using the parking system at the airport, should it ever be necessary to incorporate paid parking anywhere else in the city, it could be incorporated with this system? Is that correct? Or maybe not?
James, you've got more familiarity with the vendor. Do they have applications in downtowns?
I only ask that because I know I use this, I use that app in different cities for city parking. Not that we have that. And not that it's on the agenda, calm down, people.
Well, yes.
If then.
Yes, Park Mobile, more specifically, they were in Santa Fe when I was there, and I use them a lot. So they have, what is it called?
I know it's Houston, I know it's, it's.
Yeah, they do parking lots, they do it all.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
So to summarize, implementing this minimum parking fee is a crucial first step towards positioning the airport for self-reliance, positive growth, and long-term financial stability. I'd be happy to take any questions. Any questions for Manager Harris?
Yeah, I've got one more. Far be it from me to be the person who's advocating to pay more to park somewhere, but is there any sort of plan as we go forward and kind of get past this initial hurdle of acceptance of paying for parking at all at the Waco Airport, to have maybe a tiered parking system where it's maybe a dollar more, $2 more to park right up at that sort of front, currently 24-hour lot versus slightly cheaper to park in the long-term lot that we have further away?
Yes, sir. So in my unpublished plans for the airport, I've reached, well, several vendors.
This meeting is recorded, they will be published. And your soon-to-be-published plans.
Yeah. I've been contacted by several solar vendors, and I've expressed the interest in doing some solar parking. So if we do ever end up getting covered parking or possibly a parking garage, we will have tiered parking, subject to approval.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I like the survey of airports, both nationwide and statewide, and to learn that we're only, you know, one of 10% of nationwide airports that doesn't charge for parking. I imagine the others are very small airports as well, and that only two other airports, both metro areas that are, Beaumont may be larger than us, but I know San Angelo is smaller. And so I think that's pretty persuasive that it's time to look at this as a revenue source for the airport. I know that many non-residents of the city of Waco enjoy the airport services. It is a regional airport, but the city bears the cost of running the airport, and I think this is a way to help get our brother and sister communities to help share the cost of funding our airport. And so, but in a reasonable way. I think it's starting at $5 and stepping it up to where it's still below our mid-sized Texas city average is a very reasonable fee implementation schedule. So I appreciate these recommendations, I appreciate the study, and I appreciate your presentation here.
Thank you.
Yep, great presentation. I like the way you're thinking about this, going to kind of a user-fee logic. By doing this, we are ostensibly sort of helping reduce the general fund need by having the airport kind of help carry itself in a regional sort of service that we're providing here for central Texas. But great presentation, appreciate it, and look forward to seeing this all happen.
Mayor, I apologize for taking the last word from you, so feel free to throw something on the end of this, but I also want to acknowledge, this is Director Harris's first presentation to us, and I've heard it can be intimidating with us sitting up here on this pedestal, so to speak. So great job getting through that. I feel way more informed about how this is going to be rolled out, and I feel like this, you know, the last time we talked about this, it was very much just an idea and something we were exploring, and this feels like a fully baked plan at this point. So I really appreciate the effort you put into that, and thanks for the presentation today.
Thank you. All right, the next item is Work Session B5, Discussion of the 89th Texas Legislature Regular and Special Sessions. City Manager Ford.
Sure, we've got a brief update, I believe, from Ashley Nystrom, Chief of Staff, on this item. As a council familiar, we recently wrapped up the 89th session, and we're still technically in the special session at the moment. And so Ashley's going to provide an update of those key areas where we're going to see some city impact, and look forward to the presentation, and it's probably one that we'll have to do again here in a couple weeks as special session wraps up. Ashley?
So, yes, thank you, Bradley. Hello again. So Texas Legislature, a little less certain is going to be great. But we're going to, the only way to do it is through it. So Bradley is correct, the 89th Legislature did wrap up at the end of, or the beginning of June, and we are on round two of the special session. Last session, the 88th session, they went a record-breaking five special sessions, so hoping to just be average this year. But today, we'll cover a little, a brief highlight of what all passed in the regular session, and then look at what's been happening in the special session. I went to a five-hour TML workshop on every city-related bill filed, so I promised to at least just, I'm just going to get about half that length today, so everybody buckle up.
Hi, Colin. It's a good joke, I hope it's not.
No, we'll keep it brief. I think last time I said I'd do 15 minutes, and I did 30, and I am committed to not doing 30 minutes again today. So we'll keep it pretty high level on the bills that passed, and have a little bit more discussion on what we're doing in special session. But again, just looking at the timeline, we wrapped up the special session on June 2nd, was their last day of the regular session, and then they went into special session on July 21st with the governor's first-called special session. And for those special sessions, those are typically 30-day sessions, and the governor sets the topics that are eligible to be considered. And then we did not get through much in the first special session because of some disputes and conflicts over redistricting, there was a little bit of an exodus from Texas for a little while. And so we began the special, second special session on August 15th, and we are currently still in the midst of that. They technically can go until September 13th, but there have been talks that they hope to wrap up the special session this week. It is yet to be determined. Today is a special day, September 2nd, and it's special because yesterday was the effective date for most bills that were passed in the 89th Legislature. So a lot of what I'm going to talk to you about today is already effective. There are some bills that went into effect immediately, and there will be some bills that don't start until the calendar year. But for the most part, most bills start or become effective on September 1st. And then there are some bills that become effective likely in the calendar year, but will have to pass election on November 4th, the uniform election date, with some constitutional amendments that will be up for consideration. So specifically for the regular session, we had a few local priorities down at the state legislature, one being that we became a member and one of the initial members of the Central Texas Water Alliance in conjunction with McLennan County. And so that was an initiative by some of our neighboring counties and water control authorities in central Texas to create a, basically a water authority who in the future can become a water provider for the central Texas region. That bill did pass, so Senate Bill 1194 that passed. We had a couple of local initiatives, adding us to the list of eligible entities for project finance zones, as well as a watershed initiative where we wanted to create some incentive for dairy operators in our watershed to begin hauling manure out. Both of those bills did not make it all the way through the House portion of the calendar, and so ultimately died for failure to make it all the way through. And then an added bonus, one of the good things from this session is we did have two local appropriations make it into the state budget. So the state budget's on a biennial basis, so they set their fiscal year '25 and '26 budgets. We have $10 million appropriated for the Texas Rangers Hall of Fame and Museum and the company have headquarters. That will be appropriated to the Texas Department of Public Safety in the 2026 fiscal year. So we have conversations ongoing with their representatives of what that will look like when that money gets appropriated and how we move forward. Once staff has had those conversations, that will come back to the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum Advisory Board to kind of move that conversation forward as to what that looks like.
Is there kind of a use-it-or-lose-it timeline on that money, or are we able to kind of bank it for future plans?
That is a great question, and one of the things that's not specifically outlined in the budgeting language. So one of the things we'll need to work out with DPS staff on how that works, once the money comes into their accounts.
And who determines how that money gets spent?
I believe it will be the DPS, since it's being appropriated through them, through their department. But again, great question. It's a one-paragraph allocation in the budget, so I think we'll work with our state representatives and senator on that, as well as through DPS.
I think, George, Deputy City Manager Emerson and I have a meeting with DPS next week to sort of figure out initial thoughts on how that will be deployed, so it'll be active.
And then additionally, we have our Heart of Texas Baby Health Network as our local mental health authority, and we did receive, we being Waco McLennan County Region, received $2.5 million for each year of the biennium, so $5 million total appropriated for local mental health resources and services at that facility.
Do we know the probability of that being incorporated in the base budget for future legislative sessions?
I believe this was a special ask, so I think it would have to be a special ask again. I don't know that it would be a continuing funding mechanism.
Yeah, I think it's just a commitment for the next, $5 million per year for the next two.
It's $2.5 million per year.
Tim, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, $5 million total.
Right.
We'll see. It's worth making the ask again. And so the, as has been the trend for, since I began this role in 2017, it's gotten a little bit worse for cities every year. And also, the number of bills filed have gotten higher and higher every year. So in this past regular session, there were over 9,000 bills and resolutions filed. Almost 25% of those were related in some way to city operations. Ultimately, at the end of the session, a little over 1,200 bills passed, and 260 or so of those tracked city-related bills ultimately ended up passing. I'm not going to go through all 260 today, but I do want to talk about some of the things that didn't make it through that were highly problematic for cities, being these topics up here on the screen. So we had voter approval rates were a topic of debate, I've got that italicized because that has come back in the special session. And we had supermajority approvals for our property tax rates, as well as local sales tax sourcing, which was a potentially beneficial change for Waco. That conversation did not make it through the legislature in this session. Expenditure caps were a hot topic during the regular session, italicized because they have come back again in the special session, would have been very problematic for city budgeting. One of the big bills that was very problematic for cities was the certificates of obligation and debt cap bills. That bill did not make it out of committee in the regular session and did not come back during the special session. So likely will be a topic we see come back in future sessions. Certificates of obligation and debt issuance have become an increasing focus of the legislature. Chapter 380 agreement changes were also a topic of discussion at the legislature in limiting them on the types of incentives that could be provided. That bill was carried by our Senator Birdwell, and he has indicated that he will not be seeking reelection, so yet to be determined if Chapter 380s continue to be a topic of discussion. Land use and development are always a big topic for the legislature. A large percentage of their bills focus around land use. There were bills this session to eliminate ETJ extraterritorial jurisdictions entirely. There were bills to require third-party review by right for developers to go through third-party review instead of city review mechanisms, accessory dwelling units by right, as well as including residential uses on religious-owned lands regardless of the zoning. So a lot of these, or all of these topics are on the screen because they didn't make it through in this session, but expect them to continue to be topics moving forward. Preemption, the big, the major bill, 2127, that was passed in 2023, is still a topic. There were bills that looked to add on to the list of codes that the state had preemption on. Many of those did not pass this session. However, we expect that to continue coming back. There was a very problematic bill that would have allowed the Attorney General to investigate alleged infractions on city codes that were dealing in areas of preemption. And one of the interesting penalties from that bill, if you'll remember, was that the comptroller would be instructed to withhold sales tax during the pendency of an investigation. So that bill did not make it through, thankfully, was potentially very problematic for cities. I said the word problematic a lot. I think I will get through that after we get off this slide. Community advocacy and representation, that is the anti-lobbying bill. This session, I will say, was the first session we have had where the city did not employ an outside lobbyist for our state legislature, and it's a lot of work to keep up with the bills and to understand the changes and track them as they move through the legislature. We rely heavily on TML, the Texas Municipal League, and not only their advocacy at the Capitol, but just their understanding. Their staff are experts in all of these topic areas that you see on the screen, and I don't know how they do it so quick unless they just work around the clock, but they provide bill summaries of every bill that has a potential to touch on city operations, and really are accessible to staff and allow us to ask questions about how we think bills might impact operations if passed. And so one of the things that the current bill that's going in special session would remove the abilities for cities to even work through organizations like TML. Another bill that was up that was concerning the cities was elimination of the May uniform election date. I've seen that bill every session that I have been a part of the legislature, would expect it to continue to come back. It made it a little further this session, so it'll be interesting to see how much it goes in future sessions. And then there were also efforts to move specifically bond elections and other debt elections to the November uniform election date. And then a lot of bills on utilities, one that was problematic for cities was anytime a city would be requiring utility relocations for roadwork or infrastructure work, the city would have become responsible for the costs of relocating any outside contract utilities like telecom or gas or anything like that.
Before you move on from that, Ashley, I just wanted to go back to your community advocacy and representation. We, I know all of us, well, let me speak for me. I wrote letters about the necessity of advocacy. You know, people throw around the word lobby like it's a dirty word, and it is not. It is to benefit cities. So we've had outside organizations work on behalf of the city of Waco before. We've also done it internally. And we're a beautifully mid-sized city with a lot of opportunity for resources to do those things. Imagine our neighboring cities, our sister cities that are smaller, who do not have those resources. I mean, it is almost, TML and Texas Municipal League and organizations like that are the, are some of the only ways that, you know, you have an opportunity to break, that somebody is breaking down the 9,000 bills, or 25% of those 9,000 bills that pertain to cities, towns, and villages. And, you know, we're all working full-time jobs, and we're all doing these things. And, you know, we're, we're all working full-time jobs, and we're all doing these things and doing these things. So I think it's imperative that the people know how hard those organizations work for us to help our community and our residents, and how important it is for organizations like that and the ability to, if I need to, seek outside counsel, remain available for a city, because I know, you know, we're subject matter experts on a bunch of things. However, it is impossible for us to be subject matters, matter experts on all the things. And so it is helpful and beneficial that we are able to seek help when we can. So I'm, I'm, we're still leaned in on this. I don't know where we're going to end up. Bless you. But I know that this is important for us. This is important for all Texas cities, towns, and villages. And I, you know, for one, hope that the legislature understands that when, when, how difficult it is, it would make running and managing our cities ma- make it even more difficult. So thank you for staying on top of that. Thank you for soliciting letters of testimony and being down there and being in spaces to speak on behalf of the city of Waco for this and all the other things, because we're not finished yet, y'all. They got time.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll totally echo Mayor President Bearfield on, on, on all, all those cases, and particularly the, what's being called the lobbyist deal. And where we, the alternative to get expertise in a field, and we don't want to hire somebody full-time, it's not taxpayers' good use of money to hire a full-time person of expertise on a little tiny rifle shot issue. It's better to hire those people when you need them on that specific issue, and much cheaper as well. So I've never understood the logic path on that one, because I, I don't want to spend $200, $300,000 a year to get a staff person. I'd rather spend a third of that on a, on a specialist and, and the expertise in what, what we're being challenged with, so.
Well, and the fact that the state has federal government advocacy.
Yeah, so they get, they get, they get a dog in the fight and we don't. So that one, and then I also applaud our command staff for the CEO limitations and the expenditure caps. We've been pretty active on communicating that to Austin, so good, great work.
Try to just skim through these. If you have specific questions on a bill I don't touch on. But again, the municipal finance is always a topic. The big bill that passed this session was the business personal property tax exemption, where they landed on between the House and the Senate was $125,000 on income-producing personal property. And so that's bumping up from a $2,500 exemption. So that is one of the bills that will become effective in January, following a constitutional amendment election this November. I would be surprised if it did not pass, so something that we're looking to see becoming implemented next year. When this bill was moving through, we estimated this would provide about a $1.7 million budget hit for the city of Waco revenues. Land use saw a lot of changes between zoning, development, permitting, ETJ. A lot of these bills, our Development Services team has already been bringing through on ordinance changes on where those things need to be tweaked. There are some bills, Senate Bill 15 and Senate Bill 840 specifically, that are population-bracketed, and we are right under that limit. So it's 150,000 city population, I believe, a 300,000 county population. And when those population triggers come into effect is, is on the, on the census. So if we roll into that population at the next decennial census, we would fall under the regulations of, of Senate Bill 15 and Senate Bill 840, looking at minimum lot sizes and allowing for mixed use and multifamily in, in certain areas that are not necessarily zoned for residential uses. There was some protest threshold changes on, on zoning changes and how you get notifications out, as well as some limits or prohibitions on development moratorium and how those get issued. One bill that's not necessarily applicable to all Texas cities, but is applicable to Waco, among other university and college-based towns, is Senate Bill 1567, and looking at no relationship-based occupancy limit restrictions. We are one of those certain cities that that bill is, is applicable to. And they had some annexation. Senate Bill 1844 was a bill that they tried to get through last session. It was known as the mistake on the lake was the, the name for it in Austin. It was specifically to solve an Austin problem, but because there were some points of order in the last session, it, it became statewide this session. So allows for areas to petition to be disannexed if they do not receive full municipal services. And would be automatic disannexation once it's requested. Impact fees, mostly some pre-notice requirements, supermajority votes on increases or implementing new ones, as well as some waiting periods if, if a impact fee fails to get the supermajority vote of council that it needs. There were, there are always, public safety is always a topic. At the legislature, they're very supportive of first responders in the state of Texas. House Bill 33 was in response to the Uvalde devastating incident, and basically requires more planning and oversight requirements for public safety agencies. An interesting one that went through this session was House Bill 3611, specifically targeting bandit signs and adding some penalties for the actual businesses that are advertised, not necessarily the person caught in the act of placing the bandit sign. And again, very supportive legislature for first responders, multiple bills this session on disease detection and disease prevention, as well as money through grants for different types of vehicles and equipment. And mental health was a strong topic for the legislature, and first responder peer support services had a few bills as well.
Yeah, we appreciate Representative Curry's work on 3611. It is, is something, as, as small as it seems, it's something that can plague cities with just signs going up everywhere. I know it, it, our city has certain areas that are hot for that, and so I appreciate the, the work that was put into this bill.
What is a bandit sign?
Those little advert, advertisement signs that are in the right-ofways.
Stick them in the ground.
Typically promoting like a real estate company or Realtor.
We buy houses cash.
Well, I'm against it, then.
Preemption, again, there were several bills this session that failed, looking to add to preemption, but a few bills that passed specifically, interesting restaurants and food trucks were a target or a focus this session. So House Bill 2844 would require, or basically both of these put the permitting at the state level and would prohibit local permits, additional permits, if, if those entities are already permitted by the state. And there are multiple areas, it's, it, I'm not sure the impetus behind these bills, but they even go into prohibiting cities from regulating sound at certain hours of the day or night, depending on the business regulations. So something that our health district and associations have been looking into is, is the reaching efforts of that, but, but yeah, the state will be creating additional programming to take on some of these permitting and licensing schemes. Elections, utilities, I'm, I'm gonna just fly through these as well. Elections is always a topic. Secretary of State received some additional responsibility this session on ballot language review, if there's any challenges to ballot language and the clarity of ballot language on local elections, specifically. Senate Bill 7 was the big Texas Water Fund bill that added different grant programs for not only water supply, but water infrastructure. And then Senate Bill 924 is another one that we are watching. It did pass, but we're watching for the impacts of that, where cable and video streaming services that are streamed online would be exempted from franchise fees from right-ofway utility use. One of the big ones that I didn't mention in my agenda outline, but that is, that is a new change for us on our agenda posting, is House Bill 1522. So they affected yesterday, and we did post today's agenda following these guidelines. Instead of a 72-hour layout for public posting of agenda notices, we will now be following a three-business-day practice. And so the most conservative interpretation of that, for safety's sake of, of staying within the regulation, is that the agenda will be posted for three full business days, not to include the day of posting or the day of the meeting. So for a normal Tuesday meeting, we will be posting those agendas before the end of the day Wednesdays. So previously, we were posting those on Friday afternoons typically, so those agendas will be posted on Wednesday afternoons. Holidays are not counted as a business day, nor are weekends. So on, on weeks that have a holiday, we will be posting agendas on the Tuesday before to meet those three-day requirements. Again, different bills on city administration and, and what areas that city can no longer regulate. Home-based business regulations was one of them, as well as cottage food productions, limiting cities from being able to require any sort of license or regulation for some of these smaller businesses, typically under $150,000 annual income. And then I will end the regular session on a, on a good note. For the first time since 2007, the state has raised the competitive bidding threshold under Senate Bill 1173 from 50,000 to 100,000. So you have, we have already brought those mechanisms to council in the August meeting to be ready for the September 1st effective date, at which that competitive bidding threshold, when we're going out for multiple contract bids, was raised from 50,000 to 100,000. Now we've gone into the special sessions. Like I said, the, the first special session didn't result in much action due to not being able to complete votes. There were 18 called topics in that first special session. The governor has added additional topics in the second special session. The city-specific topics have remained the same between both sessions, specifically disaster response, property tax reduction mechanisms, community advocacy being that anti-lobbying bill, as well as impact fees. The impact fee bill, Senate Bill 14, that bill has passed this session. Not a particular impact to Waco, would be relatively small. That bill provides for impact fee credits for developers who implement water conservation and reuse projects. Really, the, the other bills on that list are the ones that we are much more worried about. Senate Bill 10 is the bill, so they, currently the state limits your voter approval tax rate increase at 3.5%. Any increase over 3.5% has to go to the voters. The Senate has proposed a 2.5% cap now, and the House came with a 1% cap, but with a public safety carve-out. So a conference committee was called last week. The conference committee reverted the bill back to the Senate version of a 2.5% cap. However, today, just a few hours ago, the, the House refused to concur with the conference committee's recommendations, so the bill is still in play. It's not dead, but it has not passed yet, so we'll wait to see where they land on that between the House and the Senate, looking at the approval tax rate calculation. It is one of the governor's priorities, so I anticipate they will be staying in session for this. And again, they, they have until September 13th for this round of the special session. Senate Bill 13 is the anti-lobbying bill. It has already passed the Senate, but it is still in a House committee. So that is one of the bills we have, Councilmember Bearfield has engaged, and we've engaged with our representatives and the, and the committee staff to let them know about, you know, how we engage with advocacy down at the Capitol. House Bill 46 and 73 are additionally problematic bills that would limit municipal expenditures to a, a population-plus-inflation rate from the previous year's budget. So we wouldn't be able to grow your previous year's budget above a calculation that included, and there's some difference between the two bills, but some form of population growth either between the city or the state rate, as well as a inflation rate calculation. Those bills have not made it over to the Senate yet, and they were heard in the House last week. It is possible that they will not make it through the special session, but would be expected to come back again in the next regular legislative session. And that's where we're at right now. So we are waiting with bated breath to see where they, we come out on property tax rate and community advocacy out of this special session. Otherwise, staff have been pretty diligent in rolling out the impacts of bills passed in the regular session so that we're ready for them.
May end on the tour.
The 13th is the last day for this current special session. Again, their goal was to be done this week. TBD.
Okay, great presentation, Ashley. Any questions or comments? Yeah, keep us, the ones that I check on all the time are 4673 and SB 1013, and 13, those are the ones that can really affect how we do business in the city and really kind of hamper our growth, frankly. Okay, thanks again. Appreciate it, Ashley. The next item is Work Session B6, Discussion of Coin Op and Amusement Redemption Machines. City Manager Ford.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm gonna invite Assistant Chief Mark Norcross, as well as Assistant Director Sarah Railey up to the table to give me an update on what we call eightliners, which are, as you'll learn through the presentation, pretty prevalent in Waco. There's lots of them out in shopping centers and different locations, and the staff can provide you an update on recent legal changes, recent legal developments, and, and how we might move forward to further restrict eightliners in our community, and the reasons why. So looking forward to the presentation. Mark, you kicking us off, or Sarah?
I am.
Which one has the jokes?
The only, I wanted to think of a joke when I was sitting there, and the only joke I could think of was something about Ashley's presentation being boring, and so.
Ooh.
And it, and it wasn't true. It was very interesting. So then I wasn't gonna do a joke.
Well, I, yeah, because I mean, some, you know, some of yours might be a little boring. We didn't bring in an eightliner to play, I notice.
Honestly, that would have been much more fun.
Well, good luck on your presentation today. I'm sure it'll be great.
No, no good jokes, but, but thank you, City Manager Ford. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So we are here to, to talk about coin-operated machines and amusement redemption machines. Just a brief refresher, if you're not sure what those are. Coin-operated machines are any machines where you use any type of currency. So it could be a quarter, it could be a slug, a token, a ticket, a card, and you can think, like, these are arcade-type games, so like at main event, those are coin-operated machines. But it also includes things like jukeboxes, pool tables, that you use quarters to play. So it's a, it's a really broad definition. And then amusement redemption machines are a subset of coin-operated machines, and they are what's typically referred to as eightliners. They look like slot machines. They're more like what you would see in Vegas. So those are the two types of machines that we're going to be discussing today. And we're here because there has been some recent legal developments, and so that's what we're going to start off by talking about, is the current legal landscape and how it impacts our ordinance that we currently have and, and changes that we want to make. And then we wanted to provide you with some context and background for how these machines impact our community. So Chief Nor, Norcross is gonna address the impact on police operations, and he's gonna talk a little bit about the economic and social impact. And then I'll, I'll discuss, after that, I'll discuss the proposed changes that we're gonna be bringing to you at a future council meeting for consideration, and then we'll take you through a timeline of how we plan to roll this information out to the public. So bottom line upfront, there was a judicial ruling in 2024 where Texas courts ruled that eightliners are unconstitutional gambling devices. So the Texas courts have, have ruled, and, and we're looking to, to implement those rulings in our ordinances. So some background on that, since 1845, the Texas Constitution has prohibited gambling. So there are some small exceptions. It's the state lotteries that we have, as well as some, some charity events, like you can have charity bingo and charity raffles. But by and large, gambling is unconstitutional, is prohibited by the Constitution in Texas. In 1993, there was some concern that, you know, with the rise of popularity of, of places like Chuck E. Cheese and arcades and malls and things like that, there was a concern from the legislature that those machines would be targeted by law enforcement. And so the Texas Legislature in 1993 carved out what became known as the fuzzy animal exception. And so basically, this was to protect children's arcade games. So if, if kids are going to Peter Piper Pizza and they're spending all their tokens and getting a fuzzy animal, or they're getting a small toy or something like that, it was meant to protect that. And so eightliners have come in and exploited that exception, and so a lot of operators of eightliners have, they use machines that look like kids' machines, but really, they're used to pay out illegal gambling and, and to maintain illegal gambling operations. But it's very difficult for But it's very difficult for police to enforce, because on the surface, it looks like they fall within this exception, but in reality, they're running illegal operations. So they're very difficult to investigate. And not only are they difficult for law enforcement to investigate, but they're also difficult for residents to understand what's legal and not legal. And so actually, a couple of years ago, when I was handling municipal court prosecution, I had a ticket for public intoxication. And so what I typically do, and when I'm preparing for the docket, is I would review the body camera footage. And this individual who ended up getting the public intoxication ticket, he had called Waco Police Department himself and asked PD to come out to his location. And the officer arrives, and this person says, "I was inside this location, I was playing on one of their slot machines, and I won $1,000, and they didn't pay me out." And so he was asking this Waco police officer to go into the store and retrieve his $1,000 that he was supposed to win. And the police officer, I mean, not only are there other issues with a police officer walking in and taking $1,000 from a business, but he was trying to explain to this guy, you know, "You're asking me to enforce illegal gambling. I can't do that. You know, this is illegal. What you're doing in that location is illegal." And the person, it was difficult for them to understand, because they're like, "Well, but I'm just walking into the store, and I'm doing it within the city of Waco. So, you know, how is that possible?" So there was this gray area that was created with the fuzzy animal exception that some people were able to take advantage of. Well, that loophole has now been closed with recent litigation. So in 2014, the city of Fort Worth passed an ordinance regulating eight-liners, and they were sued by various eight-liner operators. Finally, after 10 years of litigation, in 2024, Texas courts determined that eight-liners are unconstitutional gambling devices. So following that court ruling, Fort Worth, at the end of last year, passed a new ordinance, effectively banning eight-liners from within their city. And so what that has done, what the judicial ruling has done, and what Fort Worth's actions have done, is created an opportunity for cities to follow their lead. And there are several cities across the state that are already adopting ordinances to ban eight-liners, including cities in central Texas. Now I'm going to pass it over to Chief Norcross to talk about some of the impact.
Good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. When you look at these businesses, they create two challenges. One, which directly impacts the police department, is crime concentration. Beat officers learn very quickly when one of these establishments is open within his beat, because the number of calls to those locations go up substantially. One of the things to keep in mind is, a lot of the times, these things, these places look just like a regular convenience store, and they'll have the machines and other parts of the business. But the officers start answering calls there, and it's not unusual for the eight-liner businesses to have five times the number of calls that a regular convenience store would have. Even more telling, though, is that the number of cases that are generated from those places oftentimes are 20 times more than a normal operation would be. And those, when I talk about cases, I'm talking about guns, drugs, aggravated assaults, shootings, and sometimes murders. Along with that, these establishments are also frequently linked to tax fraud and money laundering. The top slide up there, or the top chart up there on that slide, the blue dots are some of the eight-liner locations. That kind of purple cloud that is on there is a representative of increased crime activity. You can see there along Valid Mills Drive, the number of eight-liners, machines, or businesses that are there, and you'll notice the increase in crime above what a normal neighborhood would look like. The bottom picture there on that slide is just one strip mall out there in West Waco. And there were, at one point, there were nine different businesses within that strip mall that had eight-liners, machines in them. So you'll see how congregated those places get to be at times. So the, or the way that we, the police department responds to this is with covert investigations. And that is where we send undercover officers into these places to try to make cases. And we've done that several times over the years. But just to talk about a couple of them, most of these investigations require two to three years to try to build a case. In one investigation, they identified an owner that had four different game rooms, but he had 83 machines in those game rooms. According to the county's ordinance that they have passed, their game rooms are only supposed to have a limit of five machines to them. They, the investigation uncovered that they had laundered over a year-and-a-half period a little over $100,000 through those machines. Investigator got four warrants for persons involved in that activity, but the cases ended up being dismissed. Another investigation that we did was again over a two-year period. This particular owner had 16 locations, and the investigation had shown that they had laundered a little over $500,000 through that operation. And that case was never picked up by the DA's office. The other response that you get, you know, like I said earlier, the patrol officers understand the, recognize the locations for what they are, especially at night. You'll start seeing populations gathering on the parking lots, and that's really where you start getting in a lot of trouble. You get, again, discharge of firearms and assaults and that type of stuff. And the officers are able to make cases occasionally with cars coming from those locations, again, getting drugs and firearms off the folks that are congregating there. Recently, we've seen some activity around some of the locations with some of the gangs in town that have become active. So again, these things are nothing but crime magnets. You know, they attract a certain type of person, especially at certain times of the I'll get it figured out here. There we go. No? That's it. So the other thing that these things impact besides the crime, this is a tremendous amount of money that's going through these businesses that the city and state perceive no benefit from. And quite a bit of this money, in one of the undercover investigations, a lot of the money was being sent over to the Middle East, some, a couple of the countries over there. The other thing, again, because they do have fronts of convenience stores, you're losing, you know, revenue to these people rather than to some folks that are running legitimate businesses. There we go. And then the, this last slide is a slide that was put together by Dr. Jeremy Rhodes. She's a senior director of data and research for Prosper Waco. And those black dots up there are the different eight-liner facilities that we know about. They're the ones that have paid for the tax stamp to be able to operate the eight-liners. That shading represents different levels of poverty within the city. And the darker shades, obviously, are, have higher rates of poverty. You'll notice that almost all of those eight-liners are located in those lower-income neighborhoods. So they have a tremendous effect on the community. And, you know, they cost the city and the police department resources in trying to do these investigations.
So looking at how we plan to update or amend our ordinance to fall in line with that judicial ruling, the first thing we want to do is update our definitions. So we want to clearly, be able to clearly separate these two different types of machines. So in one bucket, we would have the amusement redemption machines that are the eight-liners that look like slot machines. And then the other bucket, we would have the kind of arcade games where you're, you know, like Ski Ball and shooting a basketball for tickets, where you're using some level of skill. And then also your jukeboxes and your pool tables and things like that. So we would separate, we would create a definition that separates out the eight-liners from, you know, arcade-type games that you would see at Peter Piper Pizza, Paparolos, places like that. And then once we separated out those types of machines, we would prohibit just the amusement redemption machines, so that these other machines that are legitimate, you know, kids' arcade games and things of that nature would still be allowed within the city, but the eight-liner slot machine-type machines would not be allowed. And then the last thing that we're looking at doing is repealing the occupations tax that we currently impose for coin-operated machines. So right now, coin-operated machines, the city is able to tax them $15 per machine per year. And so that's capped by the occupations code. The city can't impose any other fee or tax on those machines. And right now, we have a program where we, you know, take $15 per machine, and you get a sticker to put on your machine to say that you've paid your occupations tax.
You say per year?
Per year. It's $15 per machine per year. And so if you take out, if you take out all of the machines that would be prohibited under this new ordinance, and you left just the machines that would be still allowed for 2024, the revenue for City of Waco was just around $6,000. And so right now, to get a sticker, it requires an administrative process and development services where you have to apply for the sticker, and we have staff who go through and issue each sticker for each individual machine. And then we also have code officers that go out and do inspections for each location before a sticker is applied. And so when you're looking at the $6,000 in revenue versus the staff time it would take, it makes sense to just repeal that program altogether and repeal the occupations tax.
Sarah, in updating the language to the definitions to kind of keep the fuzzy animal exception definition, or the kind of kids' skill games or whatever, versus the kind of games of chance or the gambling, would that track the language from the Texas Supreme Court case that declared them to be illegal gambling machines?
So what we are intending to do is follow what Fort Worth has already done in their 2024 ordinance. And so after they got that ruling, they tailored their ordinance to track the language that was used in the court case. And so it does talk about, it specifically calls out if there's games of chance, or if there is a game of skill or chance. Those were the types of games that the state, that the courts determined were unconstitutional gambling devices. So we would include that language in our ordinance as well. So looking at a timeline, we would look at bringing an ordinance for your consideration in October in order to effectively prohibit amusement redemption machines. We are choosing an effective date of January 1st, 2026, are planning on that for a couple different reasons. One is that these stickers, once purchased, are effective through December 31st, 2025. So no matter when in the year it's purchased, it's good through the end of the year. So this way, no one's losing value on something that they've already paid for. But also, it gives us an opportunity to communicate with the public and to communicate with known operators of these machines to give them time to remove the machines from the city, so we're not just going to go in and enforce it the next day. And then so following that ordinance, there's some cleanup that would need to happen for the zoning ordinance, specifically just with the definitions. And so the zoning ordinance would go to Planned Commission at the end of October with an ordinance amendments coming to council in November to adopt, basically just so that the zoning ordinance matches what we're trying to do in Chapter 13. And then I've already mentioned a little bit, public outreach. We're starting that now. We've already started out. We've sent information out to the neighborhood associations, even just letting them know about this presentation for if anyone had any public input they wanted to provide. But we do intend to send, we have, because we do the stickers, we have locations for known operators, and so we intend to send out letters identifying what the changes are and what the effect is going to be, so that they have time to take action on that. So quick recap, eight-liners, per the Texas courts, are unconstitutional gambling devices. They lead to increased crime with negative economic and social impact. So we're proposing to amend the ordinance to prohibit those machines to align with that last year's judicial decision. Any questions?
Any questions on this one?
I have a question. I'm glad that we've put this in place and are following the lead, and I think this is, you know, a huge net positive for the city of Waco. You know, I think when you look at the data that's right in front of us, they're, the benefits are so paltry in comparison to the negative outcomes that we see just from, you know, the mere presence of these things popping up in communities. So I'm looking forward to rolling this out, and I think this is a huge win for the city of Waco, and I'm really happy that we get to move on this quickly.
Yeah, I fully agree.
So timeline on this, I'm just going to go back to that one page, is we will be voting on something in October, right?
Yes.
And then just for the city ordinance level, what are other cities doing? Are they following the same timeline? I guess this is an issue in every Texas city, right?
So there are a few Texas cities that have already done what Fort Worth did. The closest one to us is Belmi. They passed an ordinance back in June with the intent to prohibit, you know, eight-liners from their city as well. But I think, I think we'll start to see this pop up a lot more, especially as eight-liners kind of migrate to where they're allowed to be, and then they become a problem for the community that the community has to address.
So the people, I guess the operators of eight-liners will kind of get the heads up here in the next couple of months, that they will no longer be able to operate those as of Jan. 1, and then we start enforcing the elimination of the eight-liners.
Yes. Know what enforcement looks like?
So the way the ordinance is currently drafted, the kind of the easiest option is a classy ticket that would go to the municipal court for prosecution. And so each day would be a different violation. There is some language in there to be able to take civil action against operators as well, if we feel like tickets are not effective.
Is there any, are there any legal remedies for snatching the machines at any point, or do you have to go through citing and, at that, you know, do you have to go through kind of that process first?
So there is, there is, so in the ordinance as it's currently drafted, and it's still, you know, has to make its way all the way through legal, and we want to make sure we're on the same page. But yes, we would be able to, we would be able to seize the machines. And that's what Fort Worth is doing, they're seizing machines. And that's what Fort Worth is doing, they're seizing machines. So, they did a, they did a presentation at the summer's TCAA conference about this whole process and kind of how it's played out for them so far. So, we're getting the benefit of their lessons learned, um, kind of at the outset. And so, um, there would be that option.
That sounds good.
Does, does Fort Worth feel like they're successful with what they've been, with what they've done?
Yes. I think it might, I mean, there might be problems in the future. There's a little bit like whack-a-mole because there's so much money to be made with this that, yeah. Um, there's so much money to be made with these machines that there is an appetite to try and figure out how you can look like you're within the legal limits but really not be. And so, there's already places that are trying to say like, our games are only skill-based, you know, so we're, we're in line with, with the law because there's no game of chance. Uh, or there, you know, there's no chance associated with, with these machines. But we might see more of that and that's going to be a challenge that, that the police department has in, in enforcing this. Um, so, I don't think the problem's going to go away entirely because there is a lot of money that's being made with these machines. Um, but hopefully, this gets us a step towards solving the problem.
Any other questions? Great presentation, Assistant Director Rayly and Assistant Chief Norcross. I appreciate the information and we'll, I'm sure we'll be digesting more of this in the, in the coming months with, uh, an eye towards Jan. 1 enforcement. The next item on the agenda is Work Session B7. We're going to discuss Economic Development Agreement Program Project Agreement with the new Invasis project director, I mean, City Manager Ford.
Yes, sir. Exciting project update here. Uh, if, if you've been down to, to the industrial park, you've seen several new buildings popping up and getting ready to start operations. And one of those is the Invasis Commerce Project. Uh, looking forward to hearing the update from Jeremy Pacina, Assistant Director of Economic Development, as well as Chris Collins, our Senior Executive Vice President of Economic Development. I, I think I just added senior, sorry. I'll let Matt know. I messed that up. Executive Vice President of Economic Development from Greater Waco Chamber. Uh, of course, these two and others, uh, kind of partners in crime and, in terms of bringing new business to Waco and look forward to the update on Invasis.
You're not going to ask me if I have a joke?
Okay. It's got to be a Cowboys joke.
You really do.
Oh, I was, I was thinking I had to find the new pastime for Benjamin, uh, after the last presentation.
It's going to be a lot of, a lot of eight-liners out on the street for you, Jeremy.
All right. Uh, Mayor and City Council, uh, we're grateful to be here with you today. As Bradley said, my name is Jeremy Pacina. I serve as the Assistant Director of Economic Development and I have at the table with me Chris Collins, Senior Executive Vice President of the Economic Development for the Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce.
My title just got way longer.
So, we have an exciting update for an incoming project, uh, for you today. And if we look at the agenda today, what we're going to do is we're going to give you the background of the company, uh, an overview of the project, and then we're going to give you an overview of the proposed, uh, WebMEC grant agreement and, and overview of an amendment that we want to make to the business grant, uh, that's already in place and then the timeline for the project. Uh, and I do want to note that these two items will be on the agenda for your consideration at the next council meeting. They're not on the agenda for tonight. And with that, I'll hand it over to Chris.
Mayor, Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. Um, just to give you a little bit of background about Invasis, uh, you can tell it's a little dated because of the, the masks in the picture, but we started working with the company in, uh, 2021, uh, when they initially, uh, committed to a hundred billion dollar investment in, uh, in Waco and the creation of a hundred and twenty new jobs. Uh, they are a Mexico-based global packaging manufacturer, uh, and they operate eighty-three facilities, including one in Waco, that are across, uh, three continents and ninety-five hundred employees worldwide. Uh, just as a little side note, they were the very first site visit we did in the midst of COVID. And we did it under a tent in the, in a cul-de-sac at the end of Wycon, uh, with social distancing and all the things. So, it's, uh, it's, it was, uh, great that we were able to go from that, uh, to a groundbreaking, to a great facility that's now operational. And then, today, we're talking about, um, an expansion of their operations in our community. Uh, so, to date, from that hundred billion dollar investment, they've actually invested over two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars into the facility. They have two hundred and twenty-one full-time employees and they have, um, they have become a, uh, high-tech aluminum can production manufacturer in, um, North America and serve, uh, not only to, to reinforce our advanced manufacturing position in the community, but, um, this was their first U.S. presence for, uh, for aluminum can production. So, a great win for us that has helped, um, really establish their presence in the community. Um, when they bought that facility, that, the land from the Waco Industrial Foundation, uh, it was larger size than they needed, but they always had a vision for bringing additional investment into the community. So, you can see that, uh, you have, um, Texas Central Parkway here where Van Tran and MGM have recently occupied, uh, former Sherwin-Williams facility. Uh, you have Invasis at the back of the, the Wycon cul-de-sac here, uh, where they have their aluminum can production. And then, the site next to them is the, the land that we'll talk about for this project. Uh, so, here's, here's the, the additional acreage that they have available here, um, but you can see they, uh, occupy, um, a large facility of over four hundred thousand square feet, uh, for their current operations and then, uh, additional site here. The project itself is, um, at least a hundred, eighty-three thousand square feet for a production facility. They'll invest, um, at least ten million dollars in this facility, uh, in real property improvements with an additional forty-five million dollars for new equipment and, um, machinery. Uh, they make the cans, uh, in the existing building and what they're talking about for the new site is a, um, is a lid manufacturing facility. It's hard to have drink out of an aluminum can without a lid. Uh, so, uh, that production has, has only been in Guadalajara, Mexico, uh, until the, the establishment of the new facility in Waco. Um, they did look at multiple locations across the U.S. and even internationally, looking, um, at doing that within Mexico, um, but found that, um, because of the existing land that they had in Waco, uh, and the great experience they had with the original operations, the speed at which they were able to get that first facility up and running, they felt that Waco would be the right choice for them to establish this new production facility. Um, it'll come with seventy-one new jobs. Uh, that is a conservative number on their part, but will have an average annual wage of over fifty-four thousand dollars a year, um, which is over three-point-eight million dollars in annual new payroll that they'll be adding to the tax base. And, just before I, before I roll from this, um, a couple of things just to note about this as we talk about the economic development incentives. Um, we, we run a, a full economic impact analysis on, on every project that we do to ensure that the investment that's, uh, being considered is a strong, provides a strong return on investment and payback to the citizens of the community. Uh, as we look at the Waco McLennan County Economic Development Corporation, we did an analysis to say, what is the maximum number that we could put in front, uh, that we could sustain, uh, that would still provide a strong return on investment? And that number was up to one-point-three million dollars. However, when we look at the original project and this project together, um, we heavily incentivized the first project. Um, we'd provided a four-million-dollar grant, uh, and they were able to acquire, um, the land with the, with those dollars and to offset some of their construction costs. Uh, so, the need wasn't as strong for, on the incentive side for this project. Uh, we did provided, um, the recommendation to the Economic Development Corporation Board for consideration and their recommendation for consideration by the city and the county is for a six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. Uh, the company has exceeded all of their original metrics, uh, and so, we feel that this would be, um, a, a good investment for the future and their continued growth in our community. But you can see that when you look at the grant as a whole, it has a strong return on investment, uh, to the City of Waco and the McLennan County, uh, both of them being fully repaid back for their investment in less than a year. So, before we, before we roll on to the business grant side of things, do y'all have any questions about the Economic Development Corporation piece?
How are you? I'm sorry, go ahead.
You had a good question. I was going to make a comment.
That's just from my understanding. Um, so, when you do that rate of return based on the per-job allocation, it's different for the city and the county and, and what's used to come up with that?
Right. That's a great question. So, when we look at the, um, the per-job number is going to be the same because basically it looks at, um, if you were going to split this up over the number of jobs created, um, the allocation amount being equal between them and the job number being equal between them, that's why you see the forty-two, twenty-five, um, the same. When you look at the rate of return, you're looking at the, um, the property tax, property taxes generated by each, by the project. And so, um, the City of Waco having, uh, a, a different tax rate than McLennan County, that's where those numbers come in differently.
Thank you. I was seeing the comment that I'm, you know, this is, uh, you know, the most idyllic model for how these relationships work. And I'm, I'm really, really, uh, thrilled with how this has turned out and excited to keep moving forward because, you know, I think if every, uh, if every, if every business we incentivize had this rate of return, um, we'd all be a lot happier and people would think we're all a lot better at our jobs. Uh, not that they don't, you know, already, but, but this is, uh, this is really impressive stuff, uh, to see it on paper and you, you know it and you, you hear it, uh, in the community. But, uh, to see it live like this is always really helpful whenever we're, uh, having conversations with constituents about, you know, what we choose to incentivize when and how much money we're giving to these corporations and whatnot, uh, to be able to show them, you know, line by line, um, how it has already paid back in full and then some to our community is super helpful. So, thanks for that.
All right. And so, now, I will go over the amendment that we're suggesting for the business grant incentive. And so, based on the, uh, business grant policy that we have in place and the investment numbers and job creation, the company would qualify for up to one-point-six million dollars in incentives. Uh, and they have an existing contract that was approved in 2020. It includes reimbursement of fifty percent of personal property taxes that they've paid. Uh, the estimated value is a little bit over three million dollars and they just received the first of those ten payments this year. Uh, so, when we were evaluating the new business grant and how we would do it, it, it was complicated by the fact that they share a parcel. And so, trying to figure out how would we do compliance on old personal property devaluation, they added a third line recently, which is new investment that's not captured in the original agreement. And then, how would we layer on top of that another business grant agreement and how would we differentiate it? And so, Matt Moore on our team does all of our compliance. And so, when we make a deal like this for forty-five million dollars, he gets the receipts and he has to verify that they spent what they said they would, when they said they would. And so, to help him sleep at night, we looked at how we could do this in a, a simpler way. And so, what we came up with was amending the existing agreement to include the new property investment, the new investments for the, uh, facility, and that would simplify ongoing compliance. And so, what that would look like in this is be extending the deadline for required investments from December 31st, 2023 to the end of next year, December 31st, 2026, increasing the required investment amount for personal property investments from sixty-five million to a hundred and seventeen million. So, that includes the investments with the new, uh, plant and then extending the, uh, date for receiving the certificate of occupancy from December 31st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026. And what that would allow us to do is give them the same rate which they had, which was fifty percent reimbursement of those taxes paid. They would hit the amount that they're qualified for under our existing plan, but Matt would be able to do compliance one time and make one payment instead of having to try to figure out where that moving target is between the old investment and the new investment. And so, that is the thinking behind the recommendation. And so, to go over the incentive summary again, they will invest a minimum of ten million dollars in real property, a minimum of forty-five million dollars in personal property, equipment and machinery, create seventy-one new jobs, and the total proposed incentive value is two-point-two million dollars. Six hundred thousand from WebMEC, three hundred thousand of that is the city's portion. And then, to amend the existing business grant to include the new investment and the estimated value of that is one-point-six million dollars. And with that, we'll show you the timeline. So, they're going to move quick, just like they did on the first one. So, they want to start this October. They expect to be completed in Ja- July, 2026. They will have the property installed by then. They'll begin testing and plan to be fully operational by September, 2026. And with that, Chris will answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on Invasis? I don't think so. I'll, I'll, I like to see the spreadsheet, you know, the actual Excel and how all these calc's are made and I'll follow up with you, uh, both, uh, each on that, just to get a better feel for the flow of these. Because, uh, again, really, a great, uh, a great community partner, Invasis has been in, in their phase one and, and a great investment for the city and, uh, looks, uh, looks like a nice, uh, n- nice addition to the industrial district out there. Um, thanks again, Chris and Jeremy. We now move to, is that all the work session items we have?
That is all.
That is everything. We're, we're almost right on time. Um, we now go to the, uh, council request for scheduling and future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, we will now, uh, recess the work session and reconvene the regular session for executive session as read into the record by City Secretary at 4:47 P.M.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.072. Real property, section, um, 551.072. Downtown development project being the, the mixed-use development on city-owned and adjacent properties near City Hall. Economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.087. And personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.1074. City Manager Bradley Ford. We are now in executive session.